It'll be forming here, yeah. They should turn the inter- Yeah. I check it out.
Hey, this is Julia from COMS. I'm in the red room. This is a good time to do sound checking. Okay, great. I'm checking the microphone, testing one, two, three, making sure the audio works. How's it looking? Yes. Okay. Testing one, two, three. This is sound check I had a pre-stated. Okay, cool. Alright, I am gonna just flip the mic off until we're ready to start. Okay, thank you very much.
Alright, we're just doing one last soundtrack for Megan. Megan, can you hear me? I don't think she can.
Um, I don't hear anything yet. I think it's supposed to be camera as well.
Okay, we'll wait for the camera to turn on.
Yeah, because this is like these pieces of it should be bigger than what I just did, right?
Okay, try now.
Okay, testing the mic, one, two, three, making sure it works. Okay, great.
Yeah, I'm gonna start right here. Okay.
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. All right, I'm going to exhale. Because I want to begin by setting the record straight regarding this council's history of housing leadership that has been wildly distorted. It is this council, over the past three and a half years, that has approved record amounts of housing while securing billions of dollars in investments for communities that were previously absent from initial proposals sent to us. The work of this council representing neighborhoods in the land use process has made housing more affordable for New Yorkers. It is this council that not only approved the biggest zoning reforms to expand housing development last year, but also secured $5 billion for affordable housing, homeownership, tenant protections, and neighborhood investments. We know that people are struggling to afford homes and remaining in their communities, which is why we fought for this critical affordable housing and neighborhood funding that was not in the proposal that came to us from Mayor Adams' administration. It is this council that initiated several neighborhood rezonings in partnership with city planning, some of which have already passed, and one that we held a constructive hearing on just yesterday for downtown Jamaica, Queens. In the recently approved Midtown South mixed-use plan that can unlock nearly 10,000 new housing units, it was this council that used its power to negotiate on behalf of the people to save the 34th Street bustway that Mayor Adams City Hall wanted to kill. That success, cheered by so many, simply does not happen without the public's power granted in the council's role within the land use process. This council is doing the work, not just talking about it. As Speaker, I have led this council to demonstrate housing leadership, and the accomplishments touted by this mayor are because of our steadfast work to champion more housing in New York City. Our opposition to Mayor Adams misleading ballot proposals is not a disagreement about creating housing; it is not about the power to block housing; this is not about member deference either. Because this council, this council's members do not always defer their votes on land use projects to the local member. How can any of that be when this council has approved building more housing than ever before? To be crystal clear, our opposition about preserving the public's power to make development better and housing more affordable for everyday New Yorkers, developers do not automatically produce housing that is affordable to New Yorkers without being pushed to do so, and the city often fails to invest in our communities unless pushed to do so by the council. This is a fact. These ballot proposals remove that power to hold developers and development accountable to the needs of neighborhoods and its residents. The objections we raised with the Board of Elections about the proposals were about misleading language used to describe them on the ballot, and that hides how they take away this public power. Instead of being clear about transferring votes on land use from elected representatives to appointees of the mayor, the language simply makes broad claims about housing. We call that out as being dishonest with voters, because it is, and that is fundamentally undemocratic. We urged the Board to reject the proposal's language, not prevent voters from being able to weigh in on changes to our city's constitution. We urge scrutiny of this submitted language, because there should not be an unchecked ability in our city to put misleading language on the ballot without scrutiny. At this time, there is the ability to do this without any accountability. That is a threat to democracy, and that was our issue. While our city, state, and New Yorkers should want to close this loophole to protect our democracy from misleading proposals that seek to change our local constitution, we will now turn our attention to educating voters now that the ballot has been certified. Voters will decide, and they should know exactly what they are voting on. If voters believe that their power to fight for housing that is more affordable to them should be removed, and there should be no vote by democratically elected representatives on proposed development, then that is their choice. But the choice should be articulated clearly and honestly for them to make about whether they want to give up this democratic power to already powerful developments and the mayor. Mayor Adams has consistently demolished democratic norms at a time in our country when authoritarianism is rising at the federal level, with traces right here locally because of him. Nothing about this reality that New Yorkers have been forced to endure should leave us comfortable with handing over more power to the mayor with less democratic checks to protect public interest. My commitment as Speaker to creating more housing and shifting the norm to the council approving housing is clear. As a council member in a previous session, I chaired the first council land use subcommittee to approve housing at the Elizabeth Street Garden six years ago. It is this mayor who disregarded this year's-old approval of housing and blocked the development of affordable homes for seniors. There are countless approved housing developments stuck in the mayoral agency's pipelines because City Hall has undermined the capacity and staffing levels of city agencies. So the claim that the greatest obstacle to producing housing in the city is the council's land use power is completely dishonest. In fact, my mantra, my mantra on housing since day one, they will tell you, has been that we cannot be the council that says no to housing when there are so many people who need a place to live. No one has a monopoly on caring about housing and affordability. I'm a lifelong New Yorker, and I want more housing, because I want this city to be affordable for my children and grandchildren to stay here, just like I want for all New Yorkers and families. I have daughters that have not been able to afford to live in our city, one of whom is an EMS worker who struggles due to the lack of pay equity for first responders like herself, who have been denied a fair contract by this mayoral administration. This council has consistently fought to make this city more affordable and to build more housing. Our work today to override the mayor's vetoes that deny fair pay and approve affordable housing today clearly demonstrates our ongoing commitment. Now we're going to move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Ocean Crest Technical Correction will amend a previously approved Article 11 tax exemption to correct an error regarding the subject property block and lot information in majority Whitbrooks Powers District. 5602 through 5604 Broadway rezoning will facilitate the redevelopment of a pre-existing property in Councilmember Dinowitz's district into a 13-story, 226-unit, 100% affordable residential building under HPD's Ella program. The council will disapprove Cozy Corner Bars' application for irrevocable consent to operate a sidewalk cafe in Councilmember Holden's district. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brandon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for 28 lots in the districts of Councilmembers Stevens and Sanchez. A pre-considered resolution sponsored by Councilmember Brandon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for one lot in Councilmember Sanchez's district, and a pre-considered resolution also sponsored by Councilmember Brandon would establish a new 40-year Article 11 tax exemption for five lots in Councilmember Sanchez's district. Today, we'll vote on the following legislation: Resolution 362A, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A 701 S 988, the Social Worker Workforce Act. Introduction 1258A, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require the Department of Health and Mental Hygiene to establish a procedure to request correction of the sex designation on a death record and post an applicant, an application form and instructions for making such a request on its website. Councilmember Hudson couldn't join us today, but we do thank her for her work on this bill. Introduction 867A, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would ban the sale and distribution of menstrual or intimate care products that contain intentionally added harmful ingredients listed on the packaging label, including chemicals and fragrance. I invite Majority Leader Farias to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you so much, Speaker. The driving force behind Intro 867A is simple. Menstrual and intimate care products are used repeatedly, intimately, and often without any real choice. Since the 1970s, researchers have flagged restricted substances in these products, yet manufacturers and regulators have failed to take any comprehensive action. This bill is our answer to decades of inaction. For too long, the burden has been on individuals, especially women and low-income menstruating people, to pay more for clean products and accept the risks. That was never fair. Intro 867A changes that dynamic by putting the responsibility where it belongs, on manufacturers to produce safe products, and on the government to enforce strong safety standards. This legislation is also about equity. In a city where more than half of the population menstruates, protecting this basic aspect of public health is both a justice issue and a moral obligation. Safety should never be a luxury. Intro 867A makes that clear. More and more people want to know exactly what they're putting in and on their bodies, and they don't just want assurances, they want proof. We've already seen this push with food labels, cosmetic safety We've already seen this push with food labels, cosmetic safety laws, and restrictions on harmful substances in baby products. Now, menstrual and intimate care items are finally getting the same attention. Think about it. These products are used on some of the most absorbent tissue in our bodies, often for long hours at a time, for up to a week or more, every single month for decades. Yet for years, they've been made with restricted substances we know can cause harm, like endocrine disruptors that interfere with hormones, heavy metals like lead and mercury, and carcinogens such as formaldehyde. Without outlawing harmful chemicals in such products or establishing testing rules, companies have been able to cut costs in ways that compromise our safety. And let's be honest, the cheaper they can make it, the more they're going to push it, especially in lower-income communities where many people do not have any other options. That's why Intro 867A matters. It's a big part of the trends that says enough and ensures safety isn't treated like a luxury. 867A builds on the foundation laid by the state's PFAS ban, but goes further. We are prohibiting all intentionally added restricted substances which the state bill bans. However, we have expanded the list to include the federal catch-all ingredient term fragrance. We also extend protections to intimate care products such as douches, wipes, sprays, powders, washes, suppositories, and lubricants. These are products used in sensitive areas of the body, and they deserve the same high safety standards. Our enforcement plan is clear and practical. The ban on intentionally added restricted substances takes effect one year after enactment when found on the packaging. Once the State Department of Health sets safety thresholds for these substances, New York City will adopt them within 90 days, and two years later bans any product that exceeds those limits. From day one, any product listing a restricted substance on its label cannot be sold in New York City. This is a comprehensive and permanent safeguard that expands on the state's work to protect the health of people who use menstrual and intimate care products. Some have raised concerns about costs, but to me, safety and affordability are not mutually exclusive. We have already fought for and want access to free menstrual products in schools, public restrooms, shelters, and other city facilities. Many companies already sell safer products at competitive prices, and now every product on the shelf will have to meet the same high standard. This is how we turn decades of neglect into decisive action. Intro 867A protects consumers, sets firm limits on restricted substances in New York City, and protects health without putting safe products out of reach. It's practical, and it's enforceable. And it's now the standard that we know New Yorkers deserve. I'm proud to stand here today, not just as a legislator, but as someone who cares deeply about my health and the health of our future generations. We have the opportunity and moral responsibility to do better for women, for all those who menstruate, for our next generation, and for all people who are using intimate care products. And Intro 867 accomplishes exactly that. Thank you so much.
Introduction 791A, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Ressler, would require the Department of Social Services to post on its website the total number and percentage of all supportive housing units in the city that are vacant, as well as the number of vacant units at different stages in the placement process. I invite Councilmember Ressler to the podium to discuss his legislation.
Thank you so much, Madam Speaker. I'd like to just firstly thank you for hosting a really beautiful reception last night for Liz Holtzman. That was really special, and I was grateful for that. And I'd also like to thank you for your leadership on housing. I don't know if there was a, an area in New York City where there was more noise around City of Yes than Southeast Queens, and you led us to achieve and pass a major new expansion of housing and affordable housing across our city. And that was hard. That took real leadership, and you got it done. And this city council, as the Speaker noted, has proudly approved more new housing than any council in memory. And, you know, I have to say, it's hard to imagine how neighborhood plans move forward with this new process. You know, Controller Lander, Borough President Richards, Borough President Gibson, they each approved neighborhood plans when they served in the city council. But if you don't have the transit investments and the parks investments and the school investments to meet the needs of a growing community and ensure win-wins for the existing residents and for the newcomers, then it's really hard to build the support that's necessary for these kinds of projects. So I think that the appeals board is insidious and harmful to development prospects moving forward. I'm, I'm really proud of the legislation we're passing today. There are 5,000, 5,000 vacant supportive housing units in New York City today. It's disgraceful. We could bring almost every single mentally ill, street homeless New Yorker off the streets and out of the subways into permanent housing if this administration was just doing its job. So what we are doing today is passing legislation modeled after a successful model, after a successful system from San Francisco, where we are tracking the vacancies that exist in supportive housing across the city of New York. We will know exactly which program, which city agency, which state agency is responsible for the vacancy, how long the unit has been vacant. There will be monthly reports that are made public, not just to the city council, but to all of us, because we know transparency is the best disinfectant. And if you can't measure the problem, you can't fix it. So with this legislation, starting January 1, we will have the data we need to ensure that those 5,000 units of vacant supportive housing are actually delivering the evidence-based solution to chronic street homelessness that it was intended to. And, you know, when you look at the 5,000 vacant units of supportive housing and the 6,000 vacant units of public housing, we're talking about the opportunity to house nearly 20,000 New Yorkers in affordable housing that we control. But this administration is too darn incompetent to get its act together to provide the most basic, necessary, affordable housing that they control to address the homelessness crisis and to meet the needs of moderate-income and low-income New Yorkers who are struggling to get by. This legislation is going to make a big difference. I'm grateful to the Speaker for her leadership and support, and Deputy Speaker Ayala for hers as well, and want to thank all my colleagues for their support. Thank you.
Introduction 1175A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, would require the office to end domestic and gender-based violence to establish a program to provide income-eligible domestic violence survivors with both brief legal assistance and full legal representation throughout a divorce proceeding. In fiscal year 2026, this council allocated $1.3 million to launch a critical initiative consistent with this. It's not enough for us just to acknowledge and talk about survivors of crime, but we must actually invest in their safety and well-being. I invite Councilmember Menon to the podium to discuss her important legislation.
Thank you so much, Speaker. I really want to thank you for your leadership in pushing this bill forward that is literally life-saving for so many women that are in an abusive situation. We have to remember, the council in 2021 passed a law that created a pilot program to help income-eligible victims of domestic violence to be able to obtain free legal counsel. But the administration never implemented that pilot program. So here we are today, and it is up to this women-majority-led council, led by the Speaker, who has pushed this bill forward. This bill, it is not an overstatement or embellishment to say, is actually life-saving, because for a woman that is trapped in a situation of domestic violence where they absolutely need to get a divorce, but they do not have the economic means or the ability to obtain counsel, that is what we're doing here today. The Women's Caucus was a huge supporter of this, so I really want to thank every member of the Women's Caucus as well. And the fact that now there is funding in the budget to be able to help over 800 women who are trapped in a cycle of violence is life-changing. So I couldn't be more thrilled that this bill is coming up to a vote, and I really want to thank the Speaker and the Women's Caucus for their incredible support. Thank you.
Introduction 751B, sponsored by Councilmember Jennifer Gutierrez, would require an agency or office designated by the mayor to develop and maintain a residential fire emergency response guide for individuals affected or displaced by a residential fire. We will also vote on several bills that were recommended by the Independent Rikers Commission in their blueprint to close Rikers. These legislative solutions will help improve access to mental health care, reduce recidivism, and ensure coordinated leadership to reduce case delays and the inflated jail population. They also follow key investments the council secured in the fiscal year 2026 budget to advance the closure of Rikers. Introduction 1238A, sponsored by Councilmember Gutierrez, would require the Department of Corrections to ensure all persons in custody with a pending criminal proceeding have the technology necessary to securely receive and review case evidence via a department-issued tablet or through access provided in the new, in-the-law library. I invite Councilmember Gutierrez to the podium to discuss her two pieces of legislation today.
Thank you, Speaker, for your vision and for your encouraging words and, and reality check, as always, about our commitment to housing. I'm really proud to be able to pass two pieces of legislation today, because they really speak to what fairness looks like and what community looks like. First, Intro 1238. Too often, people in custody face immense barriers to accessing the very evidence that will determine their future. Imagine a world where you have no idea what's going to be presented to make a case for you, for your freedom or not. Without it, they cannot meaningfully participate in their own defense. This bill is about due process. I want to thank the Rikers Commission for doing the hard, honest work of identifying this gap in our justice system and recommending that we fix it. Their report made clear that access to discovery is essential if we want court modernization to succeed. The second bill, Intro 751, is part of the back-home package that this body passed partially back in July. It helps New Yorkers after disaster strikes, in the worst-case scenarios of a fire, for example, giving tenants and landlords included a sense of resources, a sense that city, that the city is going to be there for them and provide some resources. Sometimes the most meaningful thing we can do as elected officials is to make sure that on what may be the worst day of someone's life, there is something tangible to help them feel a little less overwhelmed. This bill makes sure that displaced tenants get immediate, clear information about available resources right there at the scene when they need it most. The new Fire Recovery Guide, based on something that was first drafted and distributed by my office, will now be officially maintained and available via QR code on Fire Engines. Welcome to 2025, y'all. This builds on all of the Back Home Act package, including revamping within the Office of Housing Recovery, HRO, creating a fully-staffed team of case navigators who will track cases, coordinate between agencies, and notify tenants when vacate orders are lifted. In this instance, more than any other instance, knowledge really is the power for these folks. Both of these bills come directly from what we hear in our communities, and these are my favorite types of bills to pass. I urge my colleagues to vote in support.
Introduction 1240A, sponsored by Councilmember Rita Joseph, would require the mayor's Office of Criminal Justice, upon request of a person in custody or their attorney, to conduct a holistic needs assessment when one is required for acceptance into a court-based alternative to incarceration program. I invite Councilmember Joseph to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you so much, and thank you for all those wonderful bills. I just had a fire in my district. 15 people were displaced, so thank you for that. Good afternoon, Speaker Adams, colleagues in the New York City Council. I'm Councilmember Rita Joseph, representing the 40th Council District. Today, I'm extremely proud of the bill. Intro 1240 was voted on earlier, passed in committee. But this bill requires the mayor's office, Mock J., upon request of a person in custody or their attorney, to conduct a holistic needs assessment when one is required for acceptance into a court-based and alternative to incarceration. These clinical assessments are include, are to include information on a person's mental health, physical health, intellectual ability, history of trauma, and other conditions or circumstances at the time of the person's arrest. This bill is part of a process to safely reduce the jail population in New York City. We were able to work with the prosecutors, Mock J., and several district attorneys' offices to get this bill right. I commend the efforts everyone involved in getting this long overdue bill to the finish line, and it is also part of the package to close Rikers Island. So thank you all.
And Introduction 1242A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require the establishment of an Office of Coordinator for Rikers Island Closure and the establishment of Coordinator for Borough-Based Jail Transition with the DOC. Together, they will be responsible for coordinating actions and policies by agencies with a role in the closure of Rikers Island. I invite Councilmember Nurse to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you, and thank you, Speaker Adams. I'm really grateful that this first wave of bills from the Litman Commission is moving forward. Having chaired the Criminal Justice Committee for over a year, some days I just feel like banging my head on a wall. It is extremely, extremely challenging to see what progress, if any, is being made to close Rikers. We don't actually know who's coordinating the agencies. We don't know what any of the plans are, and there is such a violence, a crisis of violence right now in the jails. There's so much work that could be done right now that are part of getting us to transition into the borough-based jails and to close Rikers. I think one of the key things about this legislation is it's going to force the agencies to come together in an inter-agency working group and finally be at the table at minimum every two months. And every quarter, they're going to have to report out what exactly are they doing in there. And most importantly, we're going to have an actual representative from the council at that table, and we won't have to depend, excuse me, we won't have to depend on waiting in these oversight hearings for them to just come before us and withhold information or just outright lie to us. So we're really excited to move this forward. It's, it's incredibly urgent, and especially as we move forward, in this election season, we cannot take a gamble on whoever the next mayor is. We want to make sure that we're holding their feet to the fire, that we know for sure progress is being made. There's so much that needs to be done to get people with severe mental illnesses out of the jails. Right now, we could be working on that. We could be getting people released early, safely. We could be using electronic monitoring. We could be making sure that people who are addicted to drugs have the right programming that they need, and that's just not happening. And we just don't know what's happening, actually. So this is super urgent, and we look forward to moving forward. Other recommendations from the Litman Commission, and, and thank you to Speaker Adams and everybody who's worked on these bills. Thank you.
Super urgent indeed. Introduction 20A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, would require the delivery worker bicycle safety course developed by the Department of Transportation to cover the safe and lawful operation of powered bicycles, as well as lithium-ion battery and charging safety. A third-party food delivery service could have their license suspended or revoked for failing to provide bicycle safety equipment, identification, or retro-reflective apparel to their delivery workers. This bill builds on the council's efforts to advance a sustainable delivery sector and address concerns related to delivery app services and workers. I invite Councilmember Brewer to the podium to discuss her important legislation.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. So yes, Intro 20 is a straightforward traffic and pedestrian safety bill related to commercial bicycle deliveries, as you heard. I feel strongly that these third-party delivery services, such as DoorDash, Uber Eats, and others, should be accountable for street and pedestrian safety. They're not right now. Passing 20A is a big victory. It's hard to regulate this industry. Their business model diminishes cities, in my opinion. App officials and lobbyists use dirty tricks to thwart our work to hold them accountable. I'm very proud to stand up to them, and I thank my co-sponsors for their support. Section 10-157 of the Administrative Code already imposes a number of safety regulations on businesses and workers that use bicycles for deliveries, such as mandating a commercial cyclist safety course for all workers. The trouble is, third-party delivery services claim they are exempt because their workers are independent contractors. I disagree. Intro 28 does four things. One, makes simple updates to Section 10-157 to clarify that all businesses and workers using bicycles for commercial purposes must follow existing safety regulations. Two, adds safe and lawful operation of powered bicycles and lithium-ion batteries to the commercial bicycle safety course, which will be administered by the Department of Transportation. Three, it eliminates existing language in Section 10-157 that allows the police department to access bicycle delivery workers' personal information. Police will have nothing to do with this information. Four, it creates a mechanism for enforcement through stronger penalties for repeat violations of current, importantly, future regulations on the apps. I want to thank Sam Goldsmith from my office, Sarah Swain from the Legislative Division, and everyone who helped, the Department of Commercial, of Consumer and Worker Protection, DOT, Workers' Justice Project, New York Immigration Coalition, Transportation Alternatives, and others. They're all supportive. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, finally, we will be overriding Mayor Adams' vetoes of three bills that support and protect our city's workers, entrepreneurs, and immigrant communities. This legislation advances policies and protections for working-class New Yorkers who power our neighborhoods and, and economy, including the growing delivery sector. Despite his own administration negotiating on and supporting these bills, Mayor Adams has chosen to abandon working people and disregard the work of his own staff, to leave working-class New Yorkers vulnerable to continued exploitation and Trump's extreme agenda that betrays them. First are the bills that advance a sustainable delivery sector that Mayor Adams has claimed to be a priority but has vetoes undermine. Introduction 1133A, sponsored by Councilmember Gutierrez, would extend the same wage and workplace protections that food delivery workers enjoy to all contracted grocery delivery workers who are integral to the delivery sector. These protections include requirements for providing transparent information, access to bathrooms, distribution of fire safety materials, and insulated delivery bags. This bill would also require DCWP to study working conditions and determine a minimum pay rate for contracted delivery workers. Introduction 1135A, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would require third-party grocery delivery services to pay their delivery workers a minimum pay rate that would meet or exceed that set by DCWP. When the law establishing minimum pay standards for food delivery workers went into effect, it didn't meaningfully increase food costs for customers. These businesses have since grown, experiencing their highest consumer spending in the first quarter of this year. These laws simply ensure that the workers who are the foundation of this industry are paid fair wages that sustain the sector in our city. And Introduction 47B, sponsored by Councilmember Shaker Krishnan and recommended by the administration's own street vendor advisory board, would remove the excessive criminal misdemeanor penalties for general vendors and mobile food vendors. Contrary to the mayor's false claims, vendors who operate without a license could still be subject to violations, fines, or civil penalties. By removing misdemeanor criminal penalties, this bill ensures New Yorkers will not have their access to education, housing, or jobs blocked, or become a target of the Trump administration for simply trying to make a living and feed their families. This concludes our stated agenda. With that, we will take on topic questions first.
Questions on bills and vetoes, and do other stuff for off-topic? Bills and vetoes?
Jeff.
The mayor's office is arguing that the Trump argument, the immigration enforcement argument, is not true, effectively, that that's never happened, that there's never been a street vendor that got brought into the immigration system. Is that accurate? Do you guys have any examples of the street vendor getting arrested and then being deported effectively because of that?
Jeff, what I will say to you regarding the Trump administration and things that we have yet to see, we don't know what's coming around the next corner. This legislation prevents and protects our workers against the behavior that we've already seen from the Trump administration. It's unpredictable, and it's lethal to the workers of New York City. This council is going to protect the workers.
Other questions on the vetoes and the bills?
Okay. Hi, good.
I have a question on the BoE decision from yesterday. I mean, we were talking about this loophole that you see in the system. What would you propose to fill that? And why didn't the council, for example, file a lawsuit prior to yesterday to try to actually get those measures off the November ballot?
With regard to the loophole, that's probably something that the council needs to look at, maybe in a future charter revision commission that the council would convene. As far as a lawsuit, we were really hoping that the BoE would understand our position to protect communities and the people, to make sure that their power was still protected instead of using this misleading language in these proposals.
Do you think a lawsuit wasn't a viable option, then? Or was less viable than getting an op-missioners on your side here?
Well, again, we were hoping that the BoE would see our side of it and that a lawsuit would not be necessary. But now, as I previously stated, we will move forward to educate our voters on the information that they should have, that they should have been privileged or privy to on the ballot in the first place.
To be clear, does that mean no, you're not planning a lawsuit now?
Correct.
And can you talk more about that education? I mean, are you committing to like an actual campaign? Are you going to spend to tell voters, vote no on these, or truly an educational campaign?
A little bit of both, Jeff. I think you know the way that we operate very well, so we will have a very, very intentional campaign and educational process for our voters to know exactly what this is. We've got work to do, because there's a lot of misinformation out there, as I've explained in remarks, regarding the preposterous notion that this council is somehow anti-housing, which is preposterous. But we want to make sure that the voters understand what lies behind the language that is simply housing and making housing better. There is so much more that impacts them.
Off-topic, Jeff, maybe?
This is actually off-topic. I wanted to ask two questions. One, the mayor's executive order about Rikers Island was recently turned down by the State Superior Court judge. And you guys have also criticized the mayor for this legislation, attributing it to saying that it would help cooperate with the Trump administration. So I'm wondering if you can expand on that. Do you believe the mayor is purposely working with the Trump administration because his charges were dropped? And then the second question is maybe for sponsors of the legislation. Instacart says that they are actually in favor of the $21 minimum standard. They just wanted to be coordinated, their employees are bored, proactive. So I'm wondering if you guys could address that.
I'll let Councilmember Nurse address that part. As far as the mayor and the Trump administration, I think that for most of us, we've pretty much concluded what went on with that. The council's position, though, in taking a look at immigration and ICE and all of these things, and the mayor's involvement with that, I think that the timing tells us everything as far as the way that things worked out, the way that things panned out, and the fact that conversations were had with the Trump administration. And subsequently, Executive Order 50 wasn't even signed by the mayor. It was signed by the first deputy mayor in protection of whatever went on with those conversations. So I think all of that is pretty much self-explanatory and speaks for itself. Councilmember?
I'll just say that Instacart has spent a fortune on misinformation and lies. I think, I'm grateful that they now agree that their workers should get just over $21 an hour. It's bad optics for them to have a $13 billion company with a $40 million CEO spending a fortune to make sure these workers can't get that. We know that $21.44 an hour is barely enough to live in this city. So I'm grateful that they're aligned now. There's nothing in the legislation that forces them to change or create, to stop flexible hours. All this legislation does is set a framework for them to figure out how to pay a minimum pay wage, which they could have done at any point.
And that includes the time that they have?
Yeah, I mean, if you're on an app waiting to get a job, you can't be doing other things, right? If I'm here, working, and this is my 25- to 30-hour-week primary income, I can't be doing other things while waiting for a job to pop up, and I'm competing with 20,000 workers to get that job. So yes, this is about time on the app waiting to get work. You know, Instacart has built a model that is based off exploitative practices, exploitative practices. I hope and I believe that their business model can survive with these changes, and if it can't, it wasn't successful in the first place.
Any other questions? Hannah from the Post.
Hi. You talked a lot about Mayor Adams' involvement in these public approvals, but the governor also came out yesterday and supported them for the news report, and he may have actually been involved in getting them passed in the first place. How are you planning to reconcile that, her involvement as well with the New Yorkers, if you are going to go out and try to educate the workers in matter? And they have two very powerful officials saying, no, this is good. You guys should vote for this, basically.
Well, again, I hearken back to the misleading information that the council is not pro-housing, which is preposterous. We're going to stand on our principles that the public, that the voters deserve to know what is really behind the language, and that what is currently on these proposals is misleading them. So our sole purpose is to make sure that the voters are educated and knowing exactly what is on, what this language actually means, regardless of whether the governor or anybody else comes out to say that they're pro-housing. So is this council. So our, whatever we do is not against any statement, against the governor's statement being pro-housing. We agree, we're all pro-housing. We just want to make sure that the voters know what this language really means and how it will affect them, their power, and their duly elected representation. Thanks.
And I can leave a question back here. Let's see what, I'll, your one. Great.
So we're getting word that there was a bit of a crackdown in the Seavolt Park with all the vendors at the wrap of the rally and the customer selection. Is anything we said about the timing, the location, the enforcement on the vendors?
I'm not aware of that, so I really can't speak to that. I'm aware of what happened there. Oh, Councilmember Krishnan can speak to that.
Well, this just happened, literally in the last hour before we are set to vote to override the mayor's veto. A swarm of NYPD officers harassing street vendors who are outside right here every single day. And that kind of retaliation from Mayor Adams and his NYPD, happening on the same day, just an hour before we're set to vote on to override his bill, override his veto, sorry, I ask you, does that seem like coincidence? This is exactly the kind of retaliation and intimidation that we are rejecting by overriding his veto today.
Was anyone ticketed or arrested?
There were two that were arrested, and I know ticketed for sure. It sounds like two were arrested as well.
So there's the data.
There's the data.
Anything else?
Thanks, everybody. Good to see y'all.